Welcome once again to Plymouth Science Park's Get to Know Your Neighbours. I feel like I have to have a jingle by now, but maybe by the end of the series we'll rustle one up. And I hope you found the series interesting so far. These sessions are an opportunity to help foster new conversations and collaborations and hopefully enable you to peep into some of the doors and behind the doors and the buildings at Plymouth Science Park by stealth. Each presenter today will talk hopefully for no more than 10 minutes and we'll have a short quick Q and A session at the end. So, once all three of our speakers are finished talking, so please put your questions into the chat, either directly to myself or into the whole group and then I'll sort of keep an eye on that and feed the questions in at the end. If you'd prefer to sort of put your hand up and sort of turn your camera on and ask your questions directly, you'd be very welcome to do that as well. So, and please feel free to leave your cameras on if you'd like to say hello to us all. If you prefer stealth mode, then that's absolutely fine too. So, first up today, we're going to be hearing from Rob Perry, who's Managing Director of Gathering Momentum and India Shipray-Johnson. So, we've got a double act from Gathering Momentum. They're going to be talking to us about why your CRM is your business. Gathering Momentum have been with us just over a year now at the Science Park and they've been a really great addition to our lovely community. They're based in the Phase Two building just across the road from Reception, so do go along and say hello to them if you're ever passing. So, without further ado, Rob and India, off you go.
So yeah, I'm India and I'm a Business Administration Assistant. I've worked here for a couple of months, not as long as Rob, but I'm enjoying it and it'd be nice to speak to you all.
Thank you, India. Good afternoon. I'm Rob Perry. I'm Managing Director here at Gathering Momentum, as Fay said. And I'm just going to talk a little bit about our company, what we do and the area that we operate in. So, we are a CRM consultancy and we are often asked, well, what is CRM? And for those that don't know, CRM stands for Customer Relationship Management. And of course, that is important to every business. It has become a standard acronym used to describe any digital platform that is designed to store and manage customer information and customer interaction data. The description's broad and it obviously covers a wide variety of functions and can include invoicing, accounts management, marketing and analytical reporting. And so a CRM acts as the centrepiece of an organisation's customer management suite. Now, some larger organisations will have an ERP, an Enterprise Resource Planning Suite, which essentially will cover their entire business from a digital perspective and the CRM will be a part of that. And other businesses will have a CRM at the centre of a number of platforms which go into making a holistic system again, which is covering a lot of business, digital business processes. All of this, of course, means that if you're operating with a CRM or your CRM is part of a broader digital system, then you are benefiting from using single sources of data across your entire business. And specifically CRM is focused on customer management and marketing.
So essentially, a digital CRM can be the most important tool in your arsenal. It can remove most of the guesswork, legwork and any confusion caused by having multiple and sometimes siloed data sources. Customer communication across team members can be unified into one customer communication record. It avoids the same conversation or communication multiple times and the frustration that that can cause customers. When you expand this to include all of your customer contact points, for example, your marketing, inquiries, meetings, service delivery management and after-sales services, you present a unified organisation, one that customers want to interact with again and again. So, all of your email marketing, social media, pipeline and booking management, prospect and customer segmentation, email synchronicity, workflow automation and even your reporting and your analysis can be organised and automated for you within your CRM system.
So yeah, so that's where we come in. As I said at the top, we are CRM consultants and primarily an initial service we might offer a business will be to select the most compatible CRM for their unique business processes that apply to their business and we are able to implement a system that will complement their business by taking into account niche requirements and their essential business processes. Sometimes we are involved in projects where organisations are switching CRMs, which are by far the most complex projects that we're involved in. And we obviously strive to make that transition as smooth as possible. And we also work with people to develop their existing CRM systems. And we also, yeah, by organising and utilising its functions, streamlining the processes and improving your business benefits as a result. And also, as people's businesses grow, we help people to develop their CRM so that it is growing in time and in line with their business processes. So yeah, we can, we can, we offer people full support with their CRM systems whereby we're almost providing the back end, the digital backend and admin services, but also just ad hoc advice when required as well. And yeah, so essentially that is why we believe that your CRM is your business.
That's great. Thanks guys. I've wrestled with a few over the years and I can definitely see the benefit of them, strongly advocate for them, definitely. Yeah. So, thanks very much, both of you. Our second speaker today is Resident Director of Disruption Works, Steve Tomkinson. We've been lucky enough to have Disruption Works with us at the park since about back end of 2017. But I think it's safe to say that the last couple of years must have been extremely busy for them as businesses have realised the value to be gained from the services and solutions that they offer. So I'm really looking forward to hearing how chat and voice bots have finally grown up. Steve, over to you.
Thanks very much. So yeah, I've got a little slideshow here that I'll need to present two seconds. Okay, super. So yeah, we're all about automating the conversation. So we do a few things other than just chatbots and voice bots. Very quick introduction to us. Chatbots are the kind of text conversations that we have. Voice bots are voice self-explanatory, but they're calls into call centres or into businesses in and outbound. We also do some process automation as well. So, there's a lot of robotic processes in businesses and we kind of develop and integrate all these processes into the likes of CRMs and things. So, all this starts working within your business. So that's kind of what we do in a very quick nutshell. We have some, again, some really amazing clients over the last few years. And we've just acquired a couple of really interesting ones, which are age comrades. So the National Charity for the Age UK Partner in Wales and Contact, again, part of the Sense Charity, which are huge, as well as some of the others you can see there. We even do QPRs, but so you know, we do quite a range of people and they seem to like us. So we've got some really nice words about our stuff as well. So we're really happy to work with these guys. So, chatbots, why have they come of age? We like to think they're smart little characters, but I know a lot of people come across chatbots and they've historically had quite a bad reputation. There's a lot of strange faces pulled when using chatbots, so stuff like this, this, or even this. So there's plenty of frustration with them, but I suppose an explainer on why they're now just that little bit smarter. They can be used in quite a few ways. So answering FAQs is a pretty straightforward one, but self-service in those journeys and allowing somebody to get quick answers at the time that suits them is a challenge for most businesses. We get, most of the inbound inquiries you get are people that are deluged with inquiries via email or via just calls into their business and they can't cope. And they're usually straightforward questions. I know, you know, most of the people that are watching this or listening to what we're talking about, they will have loads of inquiries that come into a business, the same inquiries every day, the same questions are asked, the same answer is given. And it's just the mundane day-to-day stuff that takes up probably about 70% of inquiries that come into a business now. But a chatbot can service a lot of that stuff and it's really a powerful little tool. If you have something that is just that little bit smarter than they used to be, it actually becomes an asset and it doesn't become a negative experience. The reason that they've probably come of age now is the technology improves daily, the new features come in, they become much more integrated into your business. So the likes of Robert, who's just been talking about CRM services, all those CRMs now have got APIs that you can integrate into. So, a chatbot can be an extension of those CRMs and be properly integrated into your business. But the crucial thing is that we actually do design based on these as well. So we don't just leave you with the platform and then you have to do it yourself. We do the build and that makes such a difference. And then that can be deployed across any source of channel. So you can do it across Facebook. Instagram now has become a big channel for chatbots and WhatsApp, which again is a good messenger platform. This builds to kind of start engaging your audience. We can do stuff like lead gen broadcasting. You can, you can just literally start talking to your audience in a better way that at any time that they like, you know, this is 24/7. And we handle probably about 70-80% of the inquiries, like I said. So, these are important tools to be part of your arsenal now when trying to help customers against a background now of what we are. As every business is trying to struggle, which is to man your teams to provide a good customer experience, but also a good level of service. You know, it's very hard to employ people now. They're very thin on the ground in most industries and a chatbot can be just one of the team. So we can make it that much stronger for you. One of the big clients that we've got is Sketch in London, Mitchell and Star Restaurant. So a Mitchell and Star chatbot, because their standards are as high as anybody can be. And they have got, the chatbot is currently servicing about 200 plus customers a day. Every day, the chatbot has 200 independent conversations with their customers and they have seen a significant drop in calls, but an increase in bookings. That's what it is. It stopped them getting all the silly questions, all the stuff about canoe wear trainers? Do I have to do this? What have you got in this room? You know, all the little bits, you know, do you have L L meats? Do you have a good vegetarian menu? All those bits are handled by the chatbot. If they can do it, chatbots have come of age. Mitchell and Star Restaurants have standards and that has to have standards. So, you know, it's been significant. So, voice bots, the other bit of this kind of little run-through that I wanted to do. Voice bots are now incredibly advanced. They've moved on so much more now. We're working with teams of kind of voice artists now that make these voice bots just sound like a person. They're absolutely perfect conversations. So, we use Google's NLU, which is their Natural Language Understanding Platform. I don't know whether you've ever recorded, Google, use Google to record the radio, but do it. It's incredible what the transcript comes out like. It is phenomenal. It's so accurate. Above and beyond Microsoft, I'm sorry guys, Microsoft, your integrated stuff is just not up to it, hasn't got the dataset. But Google's really, really powerful. It's the best one and above all the big vendors at the moment. And again, these are built out, they're natural conversations from day one. We have seen actual first-called resolutions increasing by 60%, which just means they get sorted straight away. They don't have to call back. There's no turn and throwing. They just get dealt with and an immense amount of self-service journeys going on as well. There's a lot of tracking inside these voice bots. And if you're comparing to contact centres and the actual human agents inside the contact centres, the bots are always equivalent or sometimes better at servicing the customer than a human agent, which is a really significant move. And that's the data that comes out there. And like I mentioned earlier, all this stuff is integrated into everything now. So, channels, CRM interrupts and all the big telcos as well. So, call centre integrations, things like that. We've done a massive project with Europe Assist. They wanted to automate their roadside assistance. So, that's now a voice bot. So it means that they've actually increased their availability of their service because they couldn't extend their teams, they couldn't find the staff, they had to automate. And they've saved 42% of the time on the call for each customer, which is massive if you stood at the side of the road. And they've increased 20% their availability of the overall service, which again is huge for that kind of level of service. It's amazing. They've reduced down a seven minute call down to something like four minutes. So, it's huge and it's very accurate every single time. It means that somebody gets their service. So they've very much come of age now. The technology's proven, the results are there and we've got some really happy clients. So, thank you very much.
Thanks Steve, that was fascinating. The data really speaks for itself from the results that you're starting to get with these things. It's amazing.
Oh yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, so thanks. Okay, well, I've got some questions, but I'll keep them for the end. Finally today, I'm really pleased to introduce colleagues from the Economic Development Team at Plymouth City Council. It's a three-for-one from the council. So we have Catherine Parnell, Eleanor Eaton and Dobley. You'll be forgiven for thinking that this team were sort of put on this planet entirely to help businesses in the city of Plymouth thrive and grow. Rumour has it they have lives beyond this, but I'm certainly not sure how they found the time over the last couple of years, given all the madness that's been going on. So, today they're here to explain a bit more about some of the services and support that they can offer businesses. In their presentation, the building of partnerships for economic growth. So I'll hand over to you guys now.
Thank you so much and thank you for sharing our screen. We have problems with Zoom, so it's much appreciated. Hello and thank you for the opportunity Fay. It's amazing. Thank you for the intro. We do have a bit of a life outside of work sometimes, but not often. But yeah, we're a relatively newly formed team. I joined in early 2020 and then Kath shortly after me during the pandemic. And as Fay said, since then, we've been pretty much predominantly working on recovery planning with the sector recovery plans and also crisis support through the additional restrictions grant. So we have been busy, but it's been an amazing and worthwhile job. I think it's safe to say the pandemic was a challenge that none of us could have predicted or expected. And I think we had to gel really quickly and I think that's why Get to Know Your Neighbor resonates so much with us because as a new team who stepped into crisis mode, we had to really get to know each other and getting to know your neighbour is fundamental in making things work and finding strength in unity, which we did. And because of that title, we thought this morning when we were talking about what we were going to do this afternoon, that we would do something perhaps a little bit different. So apologies because it is absolutely unrehearsed, unscripted. It's very organic, very authentic, hopefully informative, but possibly a little bit informal. And what we wanted to do was, if we move on to the next slide, thank you. What we wanted to do is, we thought it was really important to introduce us as people. We're normally on behind an email or behind a LinkedIn post, but we wanted to really get into the nitty-gritty of who we are, where we've come from, to get to where we are today. And because talking about ourselves isn't always very nice, I think I've been nominated to go first. So if we just move on to the next slide. As Fay said, I'm Innovation and Business Relationship Manager within Economic Development, which is a very long title. And how I got to this place started a very long time ago when I did Business and Corporate Law alongside Spanish with a huge interest in corporate social responsibility. I was slightly disruptive in a constructive way as a student and wanted to learn things that weren't being taught. So I decided to teach myself. I say teach myself, I hounded people to become my mentors and I collected a really vast and eclectic range of people that inspired me back in the day before the internet, which is a whole other conversation, how I managed to cultivate those relationships, but we'll save that for another day. I started my business in 1997 in Cornwall, which was a challenge as a young entrepreneur, but also so rewarding. And then in 2002, I moved back to Plymouth with my one-year-old son and I bought a derelict house because that is what you do. It was an interesting journey and a huge challenge. Learned a lot about DIY and patience along with other stuff. But then I realised I really missed work and I was very fortunate to be given the opportunity to work with Adrian Finkin. He gave me the opportunity to really apply those entrepreneurial skills and thinking into the third sector and that's where my income generation and fundraising journey became. I studied really hard and got some great qualifications from organisations like the Institute of Fundraising and was able to then later on in life go back and lecture income generation. I worked on the TRT build at Cat Down, which you might be familiar with, and also at the Theatre Royal and the Pavilions was also part of the portfolio then. I then went freelance in 2010 because I'd learnt a lot during the recession of 2008 and wanted to support other businesses. It was amazing because I was able to turn my passion into profession with real purpose and worked with great clients, including the Real Ideas Organisation, who I then later went on to become a senior consultant for. And I worked on the Social Enterprise qualification and unlocking the wealth of brilliance within the city through historic buildings and academy schools and all of those amazing things that Real Ideas are known for. Then, as we all do sometimes, went a bit crazy and offline and went into tourism and hospitality and was a development manager for a family portfolio of businesses in the city. And then in January 2020, as I said, I had the fortune of joining Nina Solarka's team and working within Economic Development. And now I'm going to pass over to Steve.
Thanks Ellie. So yeah, I'm a Senior Economic Development Officer, working in the Business and Innovation Team within Economic Development. So while we're a fairly new team, I've actually been with the council for about 11 years now. Started off my journey as an apprentice, doing a business administration apprenticeship with the Economic Development Team. At the time, I wasn't really sure what my future path was going to be. But actually, once I got into the team and really saw that there was an opportunity to improve the city that I absolutely loved to live in, I felt like this was the place for me. So, I've been very lucky over the last 11 years to continue to find opportunities within the wider Economic Development Team and I've held a series of different positions. During that time, I've also studied part-time. So I've got a degree in Business and Economics from the Open University. So I was working full-time while studying part-time for six years, which wasn't, it was a great experience, let's put it that way. And it helped shape my work ethic today, I'll say that. And I'm very proud to have come out of that with a First Class Honours degree in Business and Economics. As I say, I've held a number of positions within Economic Development over my time, which has really given me the opportunity to work on pretty much projects that cover any facet of economic development. And if you're familiar with Economic Development in any way, shape or form, any facet of Economic Development really means absolutely anything, any way, shape or form you can get involved in. So, really does keep you on your toes. Every day is different. An example of some of the things that I've worked on are, I was a grant administrator for a programme which looked to support young people into work and pilot different activities, which came as part of the city deal, which we secured as a city in 2012. And some of the activity that was undertaken through that programme was then used nationally for different activities to support young people into employment. And that was called Future Works. Alongside that, I was also working on a project called Plymouth Your Space, which was a meanwhile-use project where we were looking to join up people with ideas to utilise, underutilise space within the city centre. So this was at a time when, post the financial crash in 2008, when the High Street was really struggling to thrive. We were trying to find alternative uses for the shops, et cetera. So it really has been a kind of a diverse route for me and I've managed to get experience across a number of different kind of areas. And at the moment, so working in the Business and Innovation Team, my role really is centred around supporting the marine sector and the marine industry in the city. So I get to work on a huge number of different really exciting projects, like Smart Sound Connect and the wider Smart Sound Project as well. And I was also tasked with delivering the internationally successful Marine Tech Expo here in the city. So I had a great experience doing that. And for my sins as well, I get to work with Fay here at the Science Park on the Plymouth Health and Innovation Alliance as well. So, still early days on that one, but we're looking to really grow that as a focus for the city as well alongside the marine sector. So at that point, I'd like to hand over to Kath, who can take the reins from there.
Thanks Dave. Hi everyone. So how did I get to be a Senior Economic Development Officer? Well, I started my career working for Business Link, which was then the business advisor, the organisation, I can't speak, that spanned the country. I actually started in the IT department and got fully Microsoft accredited. And then, as you do, I wanted a change of scene. So I was lucky enough to be appointed as a business advisor. I worked across Cornwall, Devon and Somerset and I got to work with some fabulous businesses. I got fully accredited as well. They put me through the Spady accreditation. During the time at Business Link, we worked on a load of ERDF programmes as well. I learnt an awful lot and I absolutely loved being an advisor. When that Business Link was phased out in 2011 and I actually joined Plymouth University, initially on a three-month contract and ended up staying there until I joined the council in 2020. I had a brilliant time at the university. I started out in the Enterprise Solutions Team, which was about encouraging businesses and universities to work together. And I then, three years before I left them, I joined a programme in Cornwall, which was university-led, which was called Acceleration Through Innovation. So I worked with a whole host of Cornish businesses, taking their ideas from an idea straight right up to the actual product. That was brilliant. I was trained by the Institute of Knowledge Exchange based up in London and learnt a whole host of innovation techniques that I've been able to pass on to people. So that was a fabulous time. And then 2020, it's actually my anniversary tomorrow. I'll have been at the university, sorry, the council for two years. I joined the council right in the middle of lockdown. As Ellie said, we started administering all the grants. I got to know my team over Teams because I was home-based from day one. Now we've sort of come out of the grant landscape, I'm actually getting back to doing the day job. So I'm actually the manufacturing lead for the council. So again, I'm getting to work with some fabulous businesses in Plymouth. Aside from that, I'm also involved in organising Sale GP. And as Dave hinted at, no day's the same in this role. You get involved in so many different things. I've also been project managing an ERDF-funded programme called the Welcome Back Fund, which has been encouraging people to get back to the High Street, shop local, shop safe. But I've got to say, the last two years at the council have been a proper fun-packed rollercoaster. So I've loved every minute. And what I'm now looking forward to doing is the day job, which as I've said, is the manufacturing lead. And I think that's me.
Thank you. So if we quickly move on. So as Dave and Kath have both touched on, we have a really fast and varied role within the council, but our main objective, I think, is to really empower and enable businesses in the city to thrive and to use what we have, the amazing resources, the amazing talent, to really grow and shine. And if we move on again, I'm going to keep it brief because obviously I know that we're running out of time. But we've had such an amazing relationship with Plymouth Science Park, not just because of the amazing tenants, but also the input that the Science Park have had on all of us kind of working towards recovery and also the innovation work that we've worked on. And I'd like to say a huge thank you to all of the tenants and everyone. And I'd like to say a huge thank you to all of the tenants and everyone at the science park for all of that kind of support and engagement. And there are a few ways and things that we want to leave you with before we go. There's a huge amount of ways that you can stay connected and you can visit our website, which is Invest Plymouth. You can sign up to our newsletter, which goes out twice a month. It's full of a huge amount of information and reviews and resources. We've got over eight thousand subscribers, so it's got a real community feel. And we have social channels, so do please hook up with us on LinkedIn and Twitter and contact us at any time if you have any questions or there's anything that you want to know more about. We have an events page where you can upload any events that you're hosting or holding. And we would love you to share and celebrate your successes with us. So pop us onto an EPR distribution list that you have. We've also got things to help with recruitment, our Living and Working in Plymouth Guide and other resources. And as Kath said, we're also working on Sale GP and lots of other events that are happening. So if you do want to kind of work with us on any of those, then do please get in touch. And on the last slide, there's ways in which you can get in touch. So do contact us. We have a generic invest@plymouth.gov.uk email, but also just following the same process, eleanor.eaton@plymouth.gov.uk is the way that you can get hold of us. And we really would welcome the opportunity to chat now that we've kind of walked out of this crisis mode. And as Kath touched on, we're getting back to our business as usual. It would be amazing to connect and talk to you and see how we can perhaps collaborate in the future.
Thanks very much, guys. That was great. I have had some questions coming in. So if everybody's primed and ready, I'll try and look at my list. So first one first, this is one for team PCC. What are the current areas of focus for Plymouth City Council Economic Development Team at the moment?
Sorry. Happy if I unmute, sorry. I think for us within our team, so economic development is a very fast, a huge, big team within Plymouth City Council. But for us, as Kath touched on, it's about business as usual. It's about making sure that we get back out and engage with the businesses and really hit the ground, talking to them about what resources and what support they need. Obviously, foreign direct investment is part of our portfolio that we're working on. And the large events that are coming in, we want to make sure that businesses can really engage with them. So we do have things like an engagement pack on the Invest website for businesses to really unlock value and generate income from events like Sale GP in a way which is really, hopefully quite simple for businesses to really utilize and maximize what we have here within the city. Dave, do you want to talk a little bit about your focus within Freeport?
Yeah, so I guess one of the large opportunities on the table at the moment is around the Plymouth and South Devon Freeport, which essentially is an economic development focused project to unlock otherwise unviable employment space within the city. So looking to unlock sites at South Yard, Sherford and Langage, which have otherwise been stalled due to inaccessibility problems, which cannot be overcome by the private sector just because they're not viable to do the investments into the infrastructure that would be required to unlock the sites. So the Freeport really gives us an opportunity to maximize our potential as a city, I would say, with a very much a strategic focus around attracting businesses to the area and allowing and enabling and facilitating existing businesses within the area to grow and thrive, specifically within the marine defence and space sectors. So we've obviously got a very clear focus around marine, which is shown through a vast majority of the projects that we've kind of been delivering over the recent years. But alongside that, we recognize that we are also very strong in defence. That's not to say that we don't have other strengths. Obviously, working through the Plymouth Health Innovation Alliance, I think there's a clear focus that we recognize that the health and care sector and the kind of the health tech industry in the city is really advanced. And actually, across those two sectors, it employs about seventeen thousand people. So it's a big chunk of people for the city. So they're a big focus for us as well.
Thank you. Okay, we've got a question for Rob and India. How easily does CRM integrate with internal business systems?
Just gonna thank you. So it's, that's quite a broad question, obviously, internal business systems. Are we talking business processes here? Are we talking about kind of another platform? It's, yeah.
Adrian, I don't know if you want to unmute and elaborate a little on your question.
Oh, yes, maybe like just, you know, local, like accounting systems, sort of the typical systems within a company has.
Okay, yeah, so kind of other platform, potentially accounting platforms and other, and other systems that you may be running. It obviously varies. It's as broad as it is long. Some CRM systems will integrate directly and have, and have the facility to integrate with various platforms, email marketing accounts, social media platforms directly. And others, you potentially need a third-party product, so something that's available in the marketplace. And then potentially you may have to build something yourself and use the API connectors with the platforms that you're trying to connect. As we saw from Steve earlier, his chatbot integrates with, I presume, directly well with a number of well-known CRM systems. But again, I presume that they would be able to integrate with anything, given the right amount of coding work and whatever.
We've got a similar question for you guys while you're on, actually. It's, do you encounter many versioning problems when integrating with different software systems? Is it sector, is it, can your CRM integrate with any, you know, accounting package or other families of softwares?
Important to recognize, we don't have our own intellectual property here. We don't produce a specific CRM system. We are consultants on many and, yeah, any CRM systems. And really, we are focused on how you use CRM to automate business processes, automate marketing, just grow, grow quickly and become more profitable. Back to the question which is about versioning, the answer is yes, yes. The more, the more platforms you're using, the more issues you're going to have with updates and versioning. And again, it's an area where many businesses will, will, they will start using a number of platforms, start integrating them and of course have no, have no overall scheme for managing that, the process of change, the process of updating, which again is where we come in, ensuring that you have a quality management, a change management system in place so that you are not, so system implemented changes and business implemented changes aren't disrupting those platforms and even your own systems, your own users, without being considered and without being understood as part of the change process, rather than let's do that this week, let's do that next week. You see what I mean? It's a controlled process that we help businesses through.
Cool. Thank you. I've got a question for Steve. Do you have to acknowledge upfront that when people are talking to a voice bot, that it's actually a voice bot rather than a real person? Do you have to put a disclaimer out there?
You don't have to, but we usually advise it that the, we're not trying to claim to be a human on the other end, but what we're trying to do is get them to forget that it's a computer they're talking to. And so that that's the experience. But normally it's into, it's introduced as this is an automated service or that, you know, this is what we're doing. So for appointment reminders, we're actually doing appointment chases as a project for Vision Express. So every single appointment they have is chased by a phone call. So that phone call has to be made and the staff and store are making those. And that's of course really inefficient. So they're automating the whole process. So it's a lot of calls. It's like one point two million calls a year they'll make. So that's a lot to do, but it's going to be introduced. So it'll be introduced as a, you know, we're an automated service. Just to remind you, you've got an appointment tomorrow and give them the option to change it. And the voice bot will do all that process. But there, no point do we claim it's a human and we give them the option to hand off if need be. So we would then connect them with store, you know, so.
I've got another question for you, Steve, while you're on the line. Can you quantify how much COVID or the pandemic accelerated the use of automated technologies such as yours?
Quite significantly. So we were pitching this story before and we were getting some traction. The pandemic paused projects just for the simple reason that everybody was absolutely and utterly swamped with trying to work from home. So most businesses were really stopping taking on new projects unless they really had to. So we had projects we were working on anyway. But coming out of now, the other side of this, the other side of that particular, the situation now, we are being deluged now with people that know they want to do it. They had it in the plan. They're now coming out of this process. And it's the appreciation of that has not only been from businesses understanding it, but also the fact that consumers now accept it. And they're accepting the fact that this is a method of contacting, you know, either through a chatbot or a voice bot. And it's there. The ones that will win will be able to get a good chatbot and a good voice boss and then they'll win, you know. And the ones that try and do it themselves won't. And that's, that's the challenge.
Yeah, I suppose as they become normalized as well, then people don't feel like they're getting a second rate alternative to a human being. If, like I say, if they work well, then everybody's happy.
That's the, that's the point. And if you can get whatever you wanted done, then you don't really care so much. If it's a frustration getting it done through an automation, then that's when you said, oh, I wish I could speak to a human. But if, if you just go, I need to get my password reset. Okay, I can do that. And it goes and does it for you. And you go, great, I'm in again, or whatever the process is, then that doesn't matter. Nobody cares. It's fine.
I've got one more question. I think we've, yeah, got time for one more question. This is to the team PCC again. What innovation services and spin-out support is available from Plymouth City Council for businesses in Plymouth?
So again, that's a really big question and there is a huge amount available. We're currently working on some innovation mapping to really understand what our landscape currently looks like in the world of innovation. But within Invest Plymouth, you can go on to useful documents section and there's information guide there for startups and scale-ups, which also combines a lot of innovative support mechanisms, models and funding that's available. But also it's about coming in, chatting to us and making sure that we connect you where we can and understand where there are gaps, if there are some gaps. We know that we haven't got everything right. So it's about working on it constantly.
Excellent. Thank you. And that was a very succinct sort of answer. And we have thirty seconds to go. So I think we're always on time. So it just remains for me to thank you all very much, Rob and India, Steve and also Eleanor, Dave and Kath for their really enlightening presentations. I just love how tech and people seem to be the key to pretty much everything. So just finally, a quick reminder that our next session will be in two weeks' time, Thursday, the fourteenth of April, same time, same place, where we'll be hearing from more movers and shakers from Plymouth Science Park. So until then, thanks ever so much, everybody, and goodbye.
Thank you. Bye.